That'd be a great choice.
Would we give to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Mr. McCoslin, can you please take role?
Mrs. Feis. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor. Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for business items?
So moved.
Motion was made by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mrs. Turner.
Voting is open. Mrs. Hoppy.
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 10th facilities meeting, the October 17th committee meeting, and the October 24th regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Janasik, seconded by Mrs. Scalzo.
Voting is open. Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the executive sessions we've held on November 13th for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and tonight, November 14th, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. So, we're going to get to the highlight part of the meetings here, and so, the one that's not on the agenda is the Bethel Park tennis team has something to tell us about, so, I think, Laura, were you going to introduce?
I would gladly do that. In full disclosure, when Dr. Walsh invited us here tonight, I asked him if I should prepare something written, and he said no.
He lied.
That's why he's not here.
Dr. Kay was so generous to delegate that to me, so I am speaking from the cuff. I will do my best.
Just try to keep it within 20 minutes.
We got a couple. I think, you know, I'm first and foremost very proud and honored to be here tonight with this team, which is an incredible group of young ladies and coaches, and they deserve every accolade that came their way and the recognitions that continue to come. I know Coach Addington is actually ill tonight and couldn't be here, so he was really upset that he had to miss this. But looking back at this season and reflecting a little bit, at one point during the year, we strung together a handful of really impressive wins, and I went to Coach Doug and I said, "Hey, you know, like, I know we're good, but how good are we?" And he looked back, and he didn't skip a beat, and he said, "Laura, this is the best team we've ever had." And he's been here for quite some time, so I think that says a lot. So our young ladies, they started off with an undefeated regular season, which I don't have all the statistics on that, but I'd be willing to bet that may be the first and only one in school history. That, I think, set the precedent for continuing to break records and, you know, do things that no team in this history of this district has accomplished. We had tremendous success in our sectional tournaments, both individuals and doubles, and that led to having qualifiers in both of the Whipple tournaments, where we ended up with two Whipple champions, Kenny and Lily, who are our doubles champions this year, and then they went on to go into the state tournament, where they didn't get the ultimate goal there, but certainly, again, they went further than any doubles team has in the past. Last year was the first year we ever qualified for the states. This year, we went to states and won and advanced through the tournament. So, that was very impressive, and then certainly, everybody got all the attention for the Whipple championship. It was a really impressive run, you know, culminating with our win against North Allegheny. You know, anybody that knows anything about athletics knows that North Allegheny has that reputation of being constant winners, and having witnessed it firsthand, we went that day and we dominated them. So it was a very impressive victory for them. Girls went off to the team state tournament at PIA level a couple of weeks ago, again, had some success there, won and advanced into the second day, and then ultimately fell in a really tough match, 3-2, to conclude their season. So, again, all kudos to them because they deserve everything, but really happy to have them here tonight and let them get recognized for everything they've accomplished.
Fantastic.
I was gonna say, Mr. Crumby like always wants to take your photo.
Oh. We'll get photos. Do you want us to?
She asked.
Happens with such a big team. We're tall enough. In the middle? Okay.
You guys can go, the rest of the meetings were boring, I promise.
See you tomorrow, Emma. Art, Mr. Smock, they told you you had to stay, right? Hey, Art. Art, congratulations. Congratulations. Hey, they told you you're staying, Art, they told you you're staying for the whole meeting, right?
Wow. Yes. Student government, do we have a student government representative here?
Yes.
Okay, great. What's going on?
Hi, I'm Finn O'Neill. I'm the student government representative today. Caleb couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here to step in for him. In terms of plans for this month, we're trying to organize three spirit days for the three days leading up to break. We'll have a, well, we're still waiting for them to be approved, but we're planning on having a grout fit day, a jersey day, and a plaid day. And in addition, during that time, we're also going to have a little card, we're gonna have cards for teachers, where students will be able to fill them out, and they'll be able to write what, why they're thankful for that teacher, what they've done for them, and we're gonna have them delivered before the break as well. We're also going to be organizing two drives during this time. We're gonna have one with Light of Life, where we're going to collect dry clothes, you know, socks, jackets, whatnot. We're gonna have boxes set up through all the schools, hopefully in the near future, and collect clothes for them. We're also going to try to organize a donation drive with Toys for Tots, where we send out an email to the athletic director and supervisor, secretary, I mean, where we're gonna see if we're gonna have people bring in toys during the opening games for basketball, like, for the two girls and boys opening basketball games, instead of like an admission ticket. We would have them donate toys to that drive instead for that game. And we're also having, gonna have a secret Santa, staff, student staff secret Santa during December, where we'll have student government members be paired up with staff members, and they'll exchange gifts throughout the month of December, leading up to a student staff secret Santa dinner before school in December, where we will finally reveal ourselves and give them their final gifts. So, that's everything for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, PTO, PTA report.
Hi, this is Deanna Ford. I'm calling from Lincoln and representing all of the PTOs, just to give you an update on this month. So Halloween at Lincoln was full of lots of fun activities. The day before Halloween was a day off for our students, so we filled that time with a fundraiser event at Tooty Cheese. The next day, we had our Halloween classroom parties and parades. And in the few short weeks between Halloween and Thanksgiving, we hosted a PTO meeting, had a school store, and this week, we're also preparing for a fall-themed spirit day about giving thanks, and we're gearing up for all of our exciting holiday events and parties. At Ben Franklin, it's been a busy month as well. They had a bunch of fundraisers, a kindness day, and a goals gala. They will be finishing out the month with a fun spirit week before Thanksgiving break. George Washington is currently wrapping up a successful Black Friday raffle ticket fundraiser, and they're getting ready for the upcoming holiday season. The angel tree for gift donations is going up this week, and preparations have begun for the holiday shop, sing-along, and cookies with Santa event. Memorial is having a great November with several classrooms holding pet supply drives, a holiday food drive, and students participating in World Kindness Day by wearing their 143 Lives On a Knee t-shirts. Students will participate in a school store, and our volunteers are busy preparing for holiday events as well. Penn had a busy October. Their fall book fair was a huge success, and they were able to purchase lots of new books for their library. They also had an amazing fall festival, which is free to all of their families, and everyone had such a blast. The Halloween parade and parties were also a success. They're looking forward to a slower November and an exciting December filled with lots of holiday fun. Lastly, NAM spent the past week celebrating Veterans Day by recognizing employees, family, and friends who served, with pictures and thank you notes in the cafeteria under each branch, along with flag placement by each student in the front lawn. They have a fun family game night planned for this Friday and are busy planning their charity carnival for December as well. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you. Is there a solicitor's report tonight?
No specific report, just my best wishes for a healthy and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any updates from committees?
I have one, because we had executive session last night, I was unable to attend, but the Bethel Park Education Foundation is looking for those to receive grants, faculty, students, so even for DECA students that have some large things to do for states and nationals, you know, encourage you, it's not a hard application, it's not a long application, but there are funds out there for certain events, so just please keep that in mind as we move forward. This organization is for the community, the students, and the staff here in Bethel.
Okay, good. Any other updates? How about the superintendent's report? We have a special guest here today. Dr. Walsh's father-in-law unfortunately passed away, so he's out on bereavement.
So we're gonna start with our featured school presentation, Ben Franklin Elementary School, if you will come up and...
Good evening, thank you for having us and letting us join you. At the elementary level, we have several programs in common, but there are also certain differences that make each building unique. For many of you who haven't had the opportunity to walk our halls, this is a glimpse of the intricacies that make us Franklin. When you first walk into the building, you will notice that we have a bulletin board right at the entrance, and this bulletin board basically has monthly themes, but it's not just a bulletin board. You will see that there are books, and this is also a resource for the teachers to use read-alouds that go along with the monthly themes, and they also have digital resources as well. We also have murals in our building, and these murals are very special to us because they were a family engagement opportunity. Our art teacher, Mrs. Richie Johnson, sketched it, but it was painted by our very own students and families. This is one of the activities and family projects that we look forward to as a staff and student body. It's our annual pumpkin patch.
I wanna share one of the ways a local school is jumping into the cause.
We love this. The students at Benjamin Franklin Elementary in Bethel Park recently held their sixth annual pumpkin patch. More than 70 students brought in pumpkins that they decorated, and then they competed in different categories.
So we wanna share this with you because the winning pumpkins were Most Original, Evan; the scariest was Aiden; school spirit was Scarlett; and best represents a character, Samira; and Scarlett is holding a picture with her pumpkin because before voting ended, it fell, and only part of it was...
Oh. Oh, no. That's heartbreaking.
She worked so hard on it, too.
But still award-winning.
Good reminder that pumpkins do break.
Do break, yes. Well, the students at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School raised a total of, listen to this, $741.
Wow.
And remember, that will now be matched by PNC Bank, meaning their total contribution is nearly $1,500. We wanna say, way to go, fantastic.
We love it, and what a creative way to raise money, too. Really awesome. Thank you so much. But I wanna share one of the ways...
So one of our hallways has a belonging tree, and this particular project was a grant that was awarded to Ms. Mahoney. It was a transformed ed grant, and basically, teachers who applied had to take a problem or an issue and try to find a innovative way to teach the lessons. So she focused on second grade, and she took the district's belonging initiative, and each month, they go over the concepts such as known, accepted, heard, welcomed, invited, present, loved, befriended, needed, and supported. And as she goes through each lesson, this is just an example here of what the classroom teachers receive, so they get a storybook that goes with every single monthly theme. There's a letter that goes home to the parents, there's a newsletter for the students, and they do activities. And this is just an example of some of the goals that go over it and assemble quote after quote. If you walk into Franklin, you will also notice that our classroom doors are decorated. These are our book doors. It's the PTO project, and it coincides with our Read-a-Thon. Basically, these book doors are selected from classroom books that have been read during read-alouds. Some classes vote on it, or it's a favorite book of the class. The PTO parents are the ones who designed these doors. It's like our entryway, our kickoff to the Read-a-Thon again, and we also have our IMS student government that come and read to our students. We like to celebrate our students both in and out of school, so we have Proud Friday, which is in school, we have it on a Friday announcements, and we give shout-outs to the students for their accomplishments in school, and these shout-outs are given by the teachers and staff to their class and students. Bragging rights are parents' way to brag about their students, so they can send in pictures with little blurbs of what they're proud of. We've had like undefeated championships, swim meets, and these are just some examples of how parents can really show pride and celebrate their kids, and we can all celebrate with them as well. Junior Treatment is a fourth grade-specific field trip. One thing that is unique about this field trip is that they basically take over this entire town. This program teaches them work readiness, financial literacy, and entrepreneurship. When they take over Biz Town, they take on roles as citizens, workers, and consumers, and this will be their second year going to Biz Town. Every year, this adopted family is very dear to us as a Franklin staff. We have been doing it since 2016, and basically, we adopt several families. What makes it unique is we do not buy gifts only for our Franklin students, it's for the entire family, K to 12. And last year, our PTO, you know, pitched in an adopted family, and they're gonna do the same this year. If you see the Halloween, what we started this year as well, is we have a Halloween collection bank where the students can come and select, and they can just take a costume. They don't have to bring it back for them to keep. At Franklin, we try to keep it positive. In the morning announcements, we have a kindness quote of the day. I personally send out morning emails to my staff with some kind of positive quote. There are visual reminders around the building about keeping it positive, and Be the Eye and Kind that you see up there is actually a project that started with year, this year, with the Be the Kind Kid initiative. As you know, social-emotional wellness is very important for our students. Our social worker works with them with our second step programs, but social-emotional wellbeing is also important for our teachers. Our teachers need to be in the right state of mind, so we do have a wellness room specifically for our teachers, designed to cultivate a sense of calm and peace. They can take some time to breathe, relax, and recharge. This was also, this came out of a grant opportunity, and it was designed by Mrs. Carr and Mrs. Ritchie, who's here. I'd like to present my SOAR team leaders, who will be presenting the next segment of the presentation. We have Mrs. Cook, Mrs. Richie Johnson, and Ms. Anna Robb.
Okay, so Blackhawk SOAR stands for Safety, Ownership, Attitude, and Respect.
What is the Blackhawk SOAR program? The SOAR program is Ben Franklin's school-wide behavior expectation initiative, which focuses on positive reinforcement and motivation, rewards students who demonstrate the appropriate and expected school behaviors, and incorporates both individual and classroom community rewards and consequences.
So the goal of the SOAR program is to provide a school-wide behavior program for all of our students, and we really wanted to create an environment of respect and provide and cultivate that nurturing and safe environment for all of the students and staff members. We really found that last year, we unfortunately were getting into a pattern of just a lot of, we were, a lot of challenging behaviors, so we kind of came together as a staff and with the support of Mrs. Dumont, we were able to attend a training and really kind of dive deep into what we could do to help change that environment of our school. Here you'll be able to see, our class starts off each day with the SOAR pledge right after the announcements.
I am a proud member of the Ben Franklin Community of Engineers. I am a Bethel Park Blackhawk who is ready to soar through the great heights. Today, I will soar higher by putting the safety of myself in others' birth, by holding my actions, by having a positive attitude, and by showing respect and kindness to all. I am a proud...
I know they're cute, if you wanna hear it again, sorry. So, again, this kind of really started last year, and we wanted to involve all parties, so we really kind of went to our colleagues, and we brainstormed together, and we came up with a chart of behaviors, as silly as it sounds. We went back to the basics, and we really were looking at, you know, what behaviors do we want to see within our school building? What, the kids need to know the clear expectations, the teachers need to know the clear expectations, the parents need to know those expectations, and it needs to be a very clear and consistent language from all parties. But, again, we worked with our teachers, and we really kind of just came up with a little program that helps us track those students who are showing those behaviors, and we can reward those students by basically, the students are working for an extra recess at the end of the week. So classrooms have, they dedicate about 20 to 30 minutes based on what the students earn, where those kids can participate in some preferred activities.
It's nice as a specials teacher, every class knows the expectations, everyone in the school, we are all on the same page. I don't, it's a language that we can use, and you can say, "Is that SOAR behavior?", and they know exactly what that means, and it's consistent across the board, and it makes such a big difference. It's nice.
As far as family engagement, too, we created this, we piloted it last year in Mrs. Cook's classroom, we gathered feedback from different special areas teachers, and this year, when we decided to kick it off, we did hold two parent presentations during our open house night, so parents were aware of what we were looking for and expecting from their children, and what they could expect as far as communication from us as well. The following day, we have a school-wide assembly as well, too, with a kickoff for the program. This is some feedback from coworkers within the building about the program.
The SOAR program has been a great way for the students to know their expectations in all areas of the building. Being a non-classroom teacher, the same expectations that are in the classroom carry over to my room. The students take responsibility for their actions. I like how the SOAR program supports my distinct classroom management program.
I think the SOAR program has completely changed the tone of our building in a very positive way and was well-needed.
In my class, we love this SOAR pledge that we start out with in the morning. We say the Pledge of Allegiance and then the SOAR pledge. They are so happy and excited and positive, and it's such a good reminder about the SOAR expectations, so it starts us off in the right way.
What I love about the SOAR program so much as a special educator is that SOAR has visual components that all students can look at, they can recognize. It's a universal platform that they can refer to over the course of the day in every aspect of the school day. Everywhere from the gym, to the bus line, to the lunchroom, they can all use it, and it's visual. I also love that it can be tailored to the individual needs of any student in the building, whether they have an IEP, a 504, or they just need a little bit of extra support. I love that we can take the overall concept and make it work for every kid in every classroom. I also love how friendly it is for the kids. Kids understand it, "We are Blackhawks, we want to soar, we want to be the ones that are high-flying and doing the best that we can do," and the kids respond to it.
This is what, what you're gonna see next is the students' feedback, and it's just so cute to see them.
I like the SOAR program because I like at the end of the week, we get to go outside and hang with our friends as a reward for our good behavior, and we get to play and basically do whatever we want.
Do you think the SOAR program has had a positive effect on the school?
Yes, very much.
Why?
When we have SOAR, it makes the classrooms nicer and quieter and better for the school, rather, eh, rather than louder and worse for the school.
With the SOAR program, I know all the school rules.
Do you think the SOAR program helps you try harder in school?
Yes, I really think so, because I always have friends that are by my side, and I really like school because it's fun and it helps you learn better.
I love earning extra races with my friends. Every morning, I like doing the SOAR pledge.
What do you like about SOAR?
That people learn better, and they stay attentive to their teachers, and they earn rewards and stuff.
What do you like about SOAR?
I like about SOAR that it teaches you a lesson, that if you do good things, you can earn good responsibilities, and at the end of the day, you can get more free time.
I like SOAR because, like, you earn letters, and at the end of the day, you earn SOAR time, and you also have fun time at recess and like whenever you do specials, and you can earn letters from those.
What's your favorite thing about SOAR?
Well, my favorite thing is we get to play and get letters and be nice.
Do you think having that... Do you think having that reward makes you and the rest of your class try harder and do better in school?
Yes.
Do you think classroom behavior has been better since the SOAR program came about?
Yes, I think they work harder on each subject, subject in class and they try harder to do better things.
Does the school seem happier now that the SOAR program is in place?
Yeah.
Why do you think that is?
Because before SOAR, people would do good, but they didn't get rewarded. But now people get rewarded when they do good behavior. And that's why I like SOAR.
Have you been able to do better in school because of the SOAR program?
Yes.
Why do you think that is?
Because last year, I wasn't the best with making good choices. But this year, since they have SOAR time, I've really improved and I really would Ben Franklin the SOAR.
Okay, so I like SOAR time because it teaches others how to be kind, respectful, and sweet, and I just want everyone in Ben Franklin to soar.
Keep soaring, Ben Franklin.
A lot of that was filmed in art class, which is why they have black oil pastel all over their faces.
I just want to thank these three ladies who are standing before you because not only did they attend the workshop, they brought it back, made it relevant, and made it work for Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dumont. Next, I have just a recognition of retirees that will be forthcoming. First is James Gretzka. He is an employee that began in June of 2002, was hired as a substitute bus driver. He became a mini-bus driver in November of 2002 and currently held that position when he is anticipated to retire effective December 31st of this year. So we will miss James for his work. Mr. Cromie, there has been a lot of great news. So you probably had a lot of competition. So you have five big things?
I do, as always. There were many more than five great things that happened. A lot of people have been trying to bribe me this month to get into it, but I have too much character to accept it. I went to Franklin the other day. They made me do the SOAR pledge before I was able to enter. But, but here's our five big things for this month. The IMS Veterans Breakfast. Last week, in observance of Veterans Day, the IMS Student Council hosted its annual Veterans Pancakes and Sausage Breakfast for veterans and active service members. A few dozen mostly retired servicemen and women joined the group for this wonderful annual tradition, which included plenty of food and drink, treats, songs, and friendly conversation. And there were so many wonderful stories told. And it's really a great event that Mrs. Maykel, who oversees it, really should be congratulated for. Second one, our Spanish Four Honors. And AP Spanish students recently attended the Spanish and Latin dance culture through the Art of Flamenco Symposium at Pitt's Soldiers and Sailors Memorial and Museum. Dr. Kursinski often runs that, but this time he had to sit out. The students enjoyed an immersive journey through pieces inspired by Frida Kahlo. They also participated in a stage with the Spanish dancers to experience different Latin dances. And what was an unforgettable learning experience was part of Latin American, Spanish Heritage Month. Yesterday was World Kindness Day. I don't know if anyone heard, but it was World Kindness Day. And to celebrate the occasion, Bethel Park students and staff wore their Mr. Rogers-inspired t-shirts that read "143 Lives On in Me", or they wore Bethel Park apparel. All year long, Bethel Park schools have participated in the Be the Kind Kid campaign, and various kindness-inspired initiatives have been covered by all three major news stations and various other publications. We certainly don't do it for the coverage, but it's nice to see so many good people being recognized for their wonderful deeds. Neil Armstrong Middle School held a number of events in recognition for Veterans Day, including the planning of hundreds of American flags just outside the school. One of their most popular initiatives was their Salute to Service Wall. It was the brainchild of the PTO and the school's interim principal, Mr. Tim Beck, who's here tonight. The students and staff were encouraged to share photos of loved ones who have served or who are currently serving, along with notes of gratitude and appreciation. I can tell you, it was beautiful and it was very well done. IMS hosted their inaugural Learning and Enrichment Activity Day Lead Day, that's been so popular at the high school, giving students a unique opportunity to explore diverse interests beyond standard curriculum. Students participated in various sessions tailored to their preferences as determined by a pre-ven survey. The day not only allowed for engaging and enriching experiences, but also fostered a positive and supportive school environment, encouraging students to interact with their peers and educators in a more relaxed setting. Here's Mr. Mensch with his hands. He was, got some of the hentai tattoos on there. And your hands look beautiful, Dr. Mensch. So, but that's all, that's all we have. Those are our five big things for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. And while we're transitioning, I do want to just bring attention to the Veterans Day thing at the IMS. I had the honor of sitting with a bunch of the veterans. The number of veterans is shrinking. But we had an individual from the community, a World War II veteran that is 98 years old. And had a great conversation with that young soldier. And he was very appreciative, as were all the veterans. So thank you to the IMS for doing that. Ms. Wells?
Thank you. Thank you. This evening, my colleague and I would like to share some of our November bright spots from the curriculum department. We, I want to continue the topic that we looked at last month where we had our focus on ELA. We are running a K to five English Language Arts pilot with two different resources for possible adoption. Last month, we looked at the classrooms that were piloting the CKLA, the Core Knowledge Language Arts Program. And this month, we are looking at the HMH Into Reading Pilot. The HMH Into Reading Pilot, this is the book that is the precursor to the current book that the sixth through eighth graders use. The board adopted that last year after a year-long pilot, and this is our first year using that resource. And so we have five teachers as listed who are working through this pilot. And I want to thank them for their time and diligence and attention to the pilot. So they are working with a brand-new resource. They are giving it their all. They are attending sessions. We do Zoom meetings in the mornings during their time before school starts. They have time away from their kids. And so I appreciate all the work that they're doing in this evaluation. I have some pictures to highlight some of the wonderful things and instruction happening in our classrooms. This is Ms. Tati Reese. This is fourth grade at Memorial. And she is working with her students on a vocabulary lesson. Then we traveled to Lincoln with Mr. Steve Yost. He is in third grade. And he was working with his students on a story of a very outgoing squirrel who had some fears that kind of kept him in check. And so he was doing a lot of activities with the kids where they were putting themselves in the place of the squirrel and what they would do and not do. And one of the features of this resource is that it is a consumable book where you can see the students are highlighting and annotating right there in that resource. Then we traveled to Washington to Ms. Michelle McCain's classroom. And in this classroom, she was doing a story with a plot diagram to have her students look at main idea with the three hens and a peacock. And she was doing a circle read aloud. And they were starting by looking at the cover. And so these selections that are read at the second-grade level are actual books, like you would get from the library to be on your bookshelf. And so they had that experience of that read aloud. And then we traveled up to Neil Armstrong, Ms. Dana Polis. And in her fifth-grade classroom, the students were really working with text evidence. And so they worked in small groups together and then had the opportunity to do a gallery walk where there were questions on big sheets of Post-it paper around the room. And the students came up with their best idea as a group. So they did it individually, then as a group, and they put that on their Post-it notes. And then they attached them. And then everyone spent time walking around, looking at everyone else's answers to build that repertoire of knowledge. We have not yet seen Ms. Porter's room as she is new to the pilot. So we encourage teachers who want more information to join the pilot opportunities. So hopefully, we will get into her classroom too to see all the great things going on.
During the two-hour delay in November this month, on November 1st, we had data meetings, which we typically have two to three times a year. This year, on the first round of data meetings, kindergarten through second grade was focusing on their MAP fluency data, which is a new tool for them, assessing their abilities in reading and language arts. Grades three to eight were working with the MAP Growth Assessment, which is used for reading and also mathematics. And the high school was looking at senior exit surveys, which were completed by 100% of the seniors last year. That was all qualitative feedback from the students. So that was very, very insightful for the teachers as well. What we're really excited about moving from the data that we looked at on this day is moving into student goal-setting. And when, when you talk to teachers post-COVID, you will hear them say that they feel that students are struggling to self-regulate, to self-motivate. There's definitely a difference post-COVID in our learners. And what we really want to do is when, when we talk about who's doing the heavy lifting in the classroom, that should not just be the teacher, but also the students. So we're really looking to empower students in the learning process, work on those executive functioning skills where they have some ownership in the game. Self-efficacy is something that is very impactful. When you look at educational research, it is something that we know has an impact on kids. It is as impactful as small-group instruction. So it's really something that we need to invest in to make sure that the students have that ownership in their learning. It also is something that can improve their mindset and motivation and their sense of agency in the classroom. When we talk about goal-setting, we, I think some of us probably think New Year's resolutions, you know, one and done, you said it, I'm going to do it. You never come back to it. It's really important that kids understand the goal-setting process and what goes into that. And that starts with your basic motivation of what you want to accomplish. And these are the steps that students are going to be walking through when they're practicing goal-setting in the classroom. What are the things that could get in your way and stop you? What are some of the solutions and strategies you can use to reach that goal? Who are the people? What are the resources you can use to reach your goal? And these are not just, this is not just an academic goal. This is, this can be a personal goal. We're really just trying to model this type of self-efficacy for students. They need to think about the skills, habits, and the attitudes that they're going to need to reach that goal. They're going to need a plan of action. And you have to hold yourself accountable and monitor your progress. And this is something that the teachers will be facilitating in the individual classrooms with their ongoing support and feedback. So starting tomorrow, we are, and you heard in the PTO report, having goal-setting galas. This is different in every building. Some people are calling it gala. Some people are calling it Goal Setting Day. We have white-outs. We have black and orange days. We have people getting fancy. But regardless, there is a day in every elementary building and at NAMs and IMS where we are focused on goal-setting that day. So what's really important about goal-setting and understanding data is that students understand why we're taking these tests and what it means. So the teachers are going to spend some time really working with the students to understand what does that RIT score mean? This will be starting in grades three, so three through eight. Understanding what it means that it's an adaptive test, that MAP is going to change based on how you're performing on the test. It could get harder or easier. And we also want them to understand what are percentiles? What do those mean? So the students are going to be spending time within the classroom to really look at these things and take a deep dive into those reports. So like I said, every, every building celebration is going to be a little bit different. Things that will be consistent is they're going to look at class reports. How do we do as a class? What's a goal we can set together? We've encouraged the teachers to post that goal and revisit it often. We've also provided teachers with all of the copies of the individual student profile reports in reading and math, so they can walk the students through their performance and make sure they understand what those things mean. And they're also going to be setting a goal. This time around, we're going to focus on a personal goal. We want to make sure it's a, it's a low-entry point that everybody can relate to it and feel success. We're hoping that this will be something that we do three times a year. Every time we give that MAP test and the results come back, we want to take the time for students to look at how they did and really to take some ownership in the learning. We hope to see increased motivation, increased self-regulation, and hopefully increased overall buy-in for the things that we're doing. Because ultimately, the MAP reports tell the teachers what the students are ready to learn next. It's not, you don't get a grade on the test. You don't get a basic or a proficient. It simply tells the teacher what the student is ready to learn. So we're really trying to increase buy-in all across the board on these assessments. So tomorrow, we are kicking it off at NAMs and William Penn with our first goal-setting galas. And that's all from us.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Any comments, two minutes? Any online?
Nobody online.
Okay. The next topic is to discuss a resignation of a board member. Dan, maybe you want to kick this off and make your announcement?
Sure, I will be very brief and let Ms. Turnbull do most of the talking to kind of explain the logistics of things. But last week, I won a seat on Allegheny County Council. So in accepting that seat, I will... Thank you all. In accepting that seat, I will have to step down for my school board seat. So I went ahead and submitted my letter of resignation to President Christensen, Dr. Walsh, as well as Ms. Turnbull. That will take effect on December 8th. So my last meeting will be the December 5th reorganization meeting. Ms. Turnbull, would you like to give some of the logistics and specifics of how we have to go about that process?
No, I'd be happy to. So in the event of a vacancy of a board, of a board seat such as this, the board has, there's a couple of different moving targets. And we're just trying to find the best way for the board, for the community, to participate in this process. The school code requires that the board, at some point, accept the resignation with regret of, of, of Member Grisbeck. When we do that, we will do that by, by motion at a public meeting. And from that point, that triggers a 30-day window for the board to consider applicants and go through, through a vetting process and to appoint a successor to, to this seat. Because that is a tight timeframe and because we find ourselves very much in the midst of a lovely holiday season with fewer meetings than perhaps we, we sometimes have in a month, there are choices to be made about when the resignation is, is going to be accepted by the board. Again, because that is the trigger for, for that 30-day window. And so the board, I think, is considering its options. You'll see that the next item on the agenda this evening is, is a motion for the board to consider to authorize the advertisement of the vacancy. So it's my understanding, and the board can certainly engage in a further discussion in this forum, but that you would, that you intend to advertise and make this opportunity more widely available to the community and then to consider action on the resignation at a future, at a future meeting, I believe in December, with an appointment in or about the, your first legally advertised meeting in January. But that's certainly subject to, to the board's discretion and your preferences. But that is why it's that 30-day window. And there are few meetings between now and, and that. We want to cast a, a good wide net and offer a great opportunity to the community to participate.
I think that makes sense. It gives us about 45 days to complete the search because, you know, Mr. Grisbeck has assured us that he's not going to reverse his decision to resign.
Although you could.
Yeah, although he could, yes.
I will not.
But it'll give us a little bit more time. So when, when we look at the, kind of the activities, and you know, I'm throwing this out, you know, anybody can, can chime in if you have a different view. But when we look at the steps, we need to come up with, you know, you know, what are the criteria, what are the questions that we want people to, to, to get as a part of their, you know, application process when they decide that, that they would like to seek an appointment? What do we want them to do? What's that schedule? So that's something we need to get worked out and get posted onto the website here. And it may take the rest of the week to get that done. And, and then it'll be open, advertised. People can prepare sometime in, you know, early December then, first, second week. We'll see what the timing is. We'll schedule some interviews where people come in, kind of present your case, convince us why you're the best candidate. And then we'll make a selection. And probably, I would say, the swearing-in would happen... And probably, I would say, the swearing-in would happen, there's not gonna be another regular meeting in December, probably the facilities meeting in January, I would guess. I mean, that's just kind of how I see it.
Right. And then we have opportunities on both December 5th or December 12th for those interviews.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions, any other comments? Anybody see? So the only thing we need to do is to approve that we will advertise for this vacancy. And so if somebody could make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve, to advertise for the vacancy, and I would ask that we do it not just on social media, but if we can get it out into at least one of the community papers, so that the whole community is aware of the vacancy that is happening and the process to ask. And maybe even advertise, you know, put a sheet up here and at the municipal building, if possible.
Yeah.
Just, you know, places that people would go.
Right. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Turnbull, should I abstain from this item, considering it...
No.
Nope, I'm good. All right.
No. So motion is made by Ms. Turner, second by Ms. Hoppy.
Voting is open. Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Moving into business items under Curriculum Committee, Mr. Scalzo, can you take those three items?
Yes. We have three items. First one's professional development. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to prevent the following individuals to participate in the listed professional development activities: Dan Sloan to attend the PASBO Transportation Boot Camp in Harrisburg, PA, from November 10th, 2023 to November 12th, 2023, at a cost of $969.29. And Jason Turca to attend the SAS Institute Conference at the Hershey Lodge in Hershey, PA, from December 11th, 2023 to December 12th, 2023, at no cost to the district. Number two. Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit qualifying high school students and their chaperones, determined based on the number of qualifying students, to participate in the following competition: King of the Mountain Wrestling Tournament, Mill Hall, PA, December 12th, 2023 to December 14th, 2023. And number three, approval of revised list of task force members. Would anybody like anything held out?
Can we hold out number three, please?
Okay. So if we hold out number three, I would like to make, does anybody else want anything else held out? Okay. Well, I'd like to move items one and two.
Motion is made by Mrs. Scalzo, second by Ms. Turner.
Voting is open. Motion carries, 7-0.
At this point, there can be discussion on number three.
Should we move to approve it in second, first?
Should move in second, first, to get it to the table.
Okay. Okay. So if you can move it in one second.
Sure. Okay. I would like to move item three.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Scalzo, second by Ms. Janasek.
Would we like to, so I'm happy to continue serving on the Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Task Force after I resign, if that is, you know, the will of the board. But may it make sense to reflect that? Well, I guess, I don't know. Technically, at this point in time, I would be being approved as a board member. That's not to say that I couldn't be a community representative on that. I just don't know if an additional action would be needed once I was no longer on the board, or if we want to find someone else in the community, because I do think, you know, I'm not necessarily bringing an overly unique perspective to the EBNI task force, although I think there could be some benefit having, you know, being in tune with county government and being on that board.
So the reason I asked for it to be held out was a look at the strategic plan, which I like to do on an annual basis, just myself, and hearing the progression with our curriculum and a lot of what's happening in our schools right now. It looks like the student experience and the DEI task force, there's a lot of overlap. And I would like just a more thorough, not an investigation, but just a thorough overlook of all of those things before we move forward with a new list of members. Are there members that could potentially move into that student experience bucket? It just seems like we need to look at both of those committees a little bit more and see if we can maybe streamline, consolidate.
Do we know the last time?
I don't think there's...
Or wise use of resources, as far as...
I don't think there is a student experience.
I'm sorry?
I don't think there's a student experience group. It might be a bucket, but...
Which is worth the discussion, which is why I'd like to table this, because we could use some members on that student experience in that bucket, because, again, it just seems like the initiatives and the objectives overlap a great deal. So I'd just like to see that discussed a little bit more before we move forward with a new group of people.
So do we, we don't have, just to be clear, we don't have one currently, correct? Like, there's not an active student experience group that is regularly meeting?
Do we have a committee that meets as far as student experience is concerned?
Yeah.
Just for strategic planning purposes?
Right.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, if you look at the strategic plan, there's a number of goals that, well, now, the Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Task Force has still not accomplished. I do agree with you that there's a lot of overlap. Personally, I think there's a lot of overlap, really with just about everything in the student experience. I mean, that's really an all-encompassing item. Going back to the strategic plan, that focus was a lot more on kind of school activities and clubs and things like that. And I do agree, there is some overlap with the EBNI task force, but I think the goals that we work on in these meetings, for example, the Equity Dashboard, those are very targeted and specific items that take substantial amounts of time to work on. And I don't disagree with adding a Student Experience Subcommittee. I think that could be good if you see goals that we're not currently hitting on there. But I think that a standalone EBNI task force is needed to continue trying to make progress on a lot of those goals, because from, you know, previous presentations from Dr. Walsh, we can see that equity, belonging, and inclusion is one of our lowest overall accomplishments in terms of what percentage that's completed. So that's just my two cents on it.
Sure.
Is there a reason why we're using the term "task force" instead of "subcommittee"? I think, I thought before, all these were subcommittees, that we were doing subcommittees in the strategic...
It was, I think it was a task force when we came. It had already been changed to a task force.
I don't know. That's a good question. I think we've had a lot of discussion on the delineation between what is a committee, what is a subcommittee, what is a task force? I don't know, Ms. Turnbull, if you'd like to weigh in on that at all. I know you have previously. And what, I understand, at the end of the day, the distinction is whether or not that group has, I guess, any authority, is that...
I think largely. And so the word is less important than what it does and the power conferred to it and the expectations of the board, of that group, when it's created. And I'm not certain that I've ever, that I've yet heard a clear explanation necessarily of what it does and what it is to know whether it is truly a board committee subject to the Sunshine Law, legal advertise, and all of those components that kind of flow from it. And so we've, kind of, I know that this is, that we've talked about some components of this. So from my perspective, the title itself is not the most important. That doesn't tell me what I need to know in order to help answer those larger existential questions about what the group is. And so if we ever get to a point where that is critically important, then we will absolutely tackle that and I will give the clearest legal opinion that I can. And right now, it is in something more of a gray, ambiguous place from my legal perspective, giving it a title and telling you exactly what its powers and authorities are.
I'm not sure also why we're approving it. We have task force that the board hasn't voted to approve.
Well, we're approving the member, I guess, the new members?
But we have task force that the board has not voted to approve the members of those task force. So I'm not actually even sure why it's on here.
Do you think it's worth some further discussion, though, with those two buckets? Because Dr. Walsh spends time in both of those buckets, reporting, analyzing the data. And with overlap, I think there's a lot of consolidation and streamlining that can happen, better use of time for our administration even, just to, you know, again, it's worth more discussion than what's in front of us right here. So I'd like to table it.
So we have, yeah, really, three options, you know, do our voting, do either accept or reject, and others to table.
I think any, I could be, Ms. Turnbull, could you clarify my understanding of any item that is motion and seconded, that we need to have a vote on it?
So under Robert's rules, motion and second brings it to the table. A motion to table is, can intercede, just like a motion to amend could happen at any time. A motion to table is a non-debatable item under Robert's rules. So if you had a motion and a second to table, we would pause to consider that as the primary action. If it was successful, then the item would be tabled, in fact, and there would be no further discussion on it, at least this evening. A motion to amend is debatable, and so we'd continue through a process on any proposed amendments. Or if there is not a motion to table, then you would take it up on the merits, and you would choose whether to continue discussion and debate on the matter, or whether there was a motion to close and move the prior question, could end debate.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation. I think my thought process here is that, kind of to Sharon's point, Ms. Janasek's point, there, I don't see the clear need to approve the list of members. That being said, now that we have it in front of us, I believe there is an assumption that we should be approving this list of members rather than, you know, arbitrarily allowing them to be appointed. I'd also be somewhat concerned that if we didn't, we would kind of just pause the work that's currently being done. So I'm personally in favor of, you know, passing these members. I agree with, you know, what Ms. Hoppy said about re-looking into the Student Experience Subcommittee, and if we're fully meeting those goals and everything. However, I don't see how we can consolidate whenever there is only one group that exists currently. It seems like, if anything, we should be maybe resurrecting that group, if there's anything in there that isn't currently being met. And, you know, maybe at that point in time, we could reevaluate whether all of these people are most strongly suited for this group or that group. But I just don't see the ability to consolidate one group into anything less, unless that the motion is to just disband it entirely.
I'm making a motion to table tonight.
So there's a motion, there'll be a sound second?
We need a second.
Okay. So a motion to table, the approval of the revised list of task force members is made by Ms. Hoppy and seconded by Mr. Modrak.
Can I request a roll call vote for this one?
And we can discuss this now, right?
There is, a motion to table is a non-debatable item.
Okay.
So just to be clear, a yes is to table and a no is to continue discussion?
That would be correct.
Mr. Grisbeck?
No.
Mrs. Hoppy?
Yes.
Ms. Janasek?
No.
Mr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Scalzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-2.
Ms. Hoppy, can you take the six items under the Personnel Committee?
I would be, well, I'm not actually happy to take some. Under Personnel Committee, tonight, we have six items. Number one is the acceptance of resignations. I will comment on those at the end. Number two, appointment of personnel. Number three, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Number four, change of assignment. Number five, approval of staffing change. And number six, approval of extra-duty responsibility program.
I'll second.
So motion is made by Ms. Hoppy, second by Ms. Turner?
Any discussion?
I actually have a question. I don't know if Mr. Puccinari or Dr. Korsinski is gonna answer this. There's a resignation of three bus drivers on there tonight. Where does that put us? We are, we know we are very tight, Dr. Korsinski.
Yes. As we continue to lose valuable employees, bus drivers, as well as aides, there is a greater number going out than there are coming in. I do have a few perspectives that will be joining the training cycle in December, but we are, we are very thin, almost emergency thin. And so we are doing a great job, and we are very fortunate that our four mechanics are CDL-certified, and they are assisting us in a pinch.
So one time, I remember, because we, I asked this earlier years ago on the board, but I think there's a state law that requires us to send out every day enough seats and enough buses to hold everybody that could potentially come to school, right? And doesn't that mean that oftentimes, we have buses that maybe are half-full? I thought that was the case. We talked about this before, but we were more or less required to, you know, make sure we send out a certain number of seats for people to get on the bus if they needed to.
We have met that requirement. What happens is a number of our students and families don't choose to ride the bus and student drivers, parent pickup. We are poised, we have the buses, we have the physical assets, we have additional buses, we just don't have the individuals to fit those buses.
So I guess my question was, if we see that we have buses that are, you know, on average 50% full, could we use that opportunity to kind of redo our routes and maybe, you know, help ourselves out, even though we may not comply with the state?
We can. It'll increase the route time. It'll significantly spend more time on that bus.
So we're making a plea for bus drivers, correct?
We have an open door policy. Myself and Mr. Sloan will interview you that day you walk in. We will walk you through the, the paperwork process is not a punishment by anybody, it is just that. It's a process that, once, if they're not CDL-certified, it could take up to three months or longer to get them to that point. And so it's a, it's a long process even to just get a recruit. And we are actively begging and talking to people on a frequent basis.
But, you know, just to maybe sell this to some people out there, it has become easier, hasn't it? I think they waive the under-the-hood test and things like that.
Correct. They did modify the CDLB requirements. You don't have to be a wrench turner anymore to know every part of the engine, which is a good thing. And we have great trainers that will prepare you for that new section of the assessment. And then we have in-house training that we will do that training, physical training here on our campuses with our own buses. So that's a big benefit, that we don't have to ship them out to other training. So if you are interested or you know someone, please have them come see me or Mr. Sloan or any employee of the district, and we will, we will get you trained. Thank you.
I just wanted to, yeah, wanted to thank Mr. Slezak for his service to the district. He's also on the list of resignations tonight, even though his title is Director of Technology. I have certainly seen him go. I have certainly seen him go very far above and beyond that title, even to get involved in kind of curriculum and training, so we've been very lucky to have you, and I will personally miss you.
And I will second that. That is my regretful.
Thank you for your service with us, Brett.
I'm grateful for my, my time that I've spent here. Very, extremely fond of the technology staff that I work with, it's an amazing team. And I'm just reminded that the institutions that we serve as board members or administrators or teachers or every part of the district, it's transient time, none of our time's permanent, and we all just hope that we leave things better than we left them, there that we had them. So I hope that in my short time here, I've left things better than, than I started.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? Voting is open. Motion carries, seven, zero.
Okay, well, there's one person in the back of the room that's been waiting about 71 minutes for that vote, okay? Our new principal for NAMs, so Lisa Miracle-Volpe, I had said that right? You want to just come up and introduce yourself? I would say with a last name like Miracle, why wouldn't we hire you, okay?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. Just watching the presentations tonight alone makes you inspired to join the team, so very excited to join. I can't wait to get here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations. Mr. Grisbeck, can you take the 14 items under Finance?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. We have 14 items tonight under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number one, November 2023 salaries and bills. Item number two, October 2023 financial report. Item number three, budgetary transfers. Item number four, approval of fund balance commitments. We have committed to capital projects for $5,299,317, a commitment to retirement benefits for $4,452,193, and a commitment to legal trusts for $69,617. Item number five, payment for Independence Middle School Phase II renovations in the amount of $31,514.74 to Hayes Design Group. Item number six, payment for the new K-5 elementary school project to Draw Collective for a total of $227,630.11. Item number seven, items declared unused and unnecessary. Item number eight, scope of services approval with Dinsmore and Scholl LLP for arbitrage services related to the 2022 and 2023 bond issues. Item number nine, approval of paying agent for U.S. Bank Trust Company National Association as the paying agent for the 2023 series bonds. Item number 10, appointment of broker of record for Engel, Hambright &amp; Davies, Inc. as the broker of record for the district life and disability policies effective immediately. Item number 11, approval of Brentwood Bank as the depositor for the proceeds for the Series 2023 General Obligation Bonds issued on November 21, 2023. Item number 12, payment for Independence Middle School Phase II renovations to Site Logic Energy Services, Inc. for a total of $1,895,035 for the Phase II Giza Project Renovations at IMS. Item number 13, approval of Act One opt-out resolution. Item number 14, acceptance of donation of funding for World Kindness Day T-shirts for some students at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School from the Scarlet Lillian Poly Foundation. Does anyone want any of those items held out? Hearing none, I move to approve items number one through 14. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Grisbeck, seconded by Mrs. Janasik.
And then, Mr. McCoslin, could you please explain, I guess, really, all the items tied to the bond issues? What exactly those mean, specifically items eight and nine?
Have to go back and look at what they are. Oh, Dinsmore and Scholl, the arbitrage services. Anytime you borrow money on a bond issue, you have certain yield requirements that are tied to that bond. You're allowed to hold the money for a period of time, and you have to spend it down at a certain rate. And if your interest you're earning on that exceeds that yield, then you may be required to pay back some of the money on that interest as arbitrage, and that money has to be set aside. But it's kind of an extensive calculation that has to be done based on the rate in which you paid down the bond money and the percentage of spend that has happened. Because you had a delay in the IMS project at one period where you didn't know if you were going to do Phase II of the project, that did cause that delay, and because interest rates have escalated to the point where, which is a good thing because you're earning more interest, you probably are going to end up in a slight arbitrage situation there. So we're hiring the, your bond counsel to do the calculation. If we have to set money aside, then we're going to set that aside, and we'll hold that money until we have to make that payment, probably three or four years down the road. But he didn't want you to be caught three or fours, years down the road saying, oh, by the way, you owe this money, and you didn't know about it. So that's the reason for this. Right now, you probably are not going to end up in an arbitrage situation for the 2023 bonds because, right now, the spend-down schedule is pretty aggressive. You have a lot of work happening with moving land and getting the land prepared for the construction, so don't anticipate you're going to need that, but we put it on here just in case you do need it in the future.
Thank you very much.
What's the next one? The paying agent is, the U.S. Bank has always been your paying agent. They are the people that, when we make a bond payment, distribute it to the bondholders. So they're the intermediary, and you pay for that service. Any other ones you need?
No, I think that is good. And then, just as a clarification, I guess, for the public, that item number 13, the approval of Act One opt-out resolution, is just saying that we are not going to request any millage increase above the Act One limit.
That's correct. You won't raise taxes beyond the index that has been issued by the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Does anyone else have any questions about any of those items?
I do. It's more of a, more for public knowledge. Items declared unused and unnecessary. I don't know if Mrs. Figaroli or Mrs. Wells wants to take those. I do know that at a meeting, we talked about Hagerty books that were expired, and there was a new one, and we bought the new ones, and we've taken those, but I don't believe we can give them to anybody because they are out of date, per se.
So they're not necessarily out of date, but the 2020 version, so we got the 2020 Hagerty through the dyslexia pilot a couple years ago, and we had some teachers find success in that, which is why we then, the board approved the recommendation that all teachers would use it in K-2. And so they did come out with a 2022 version, which we used some of our ESAR funding for, to improve reading for all students, to purchase those. They had a revised scope and sequence. They had teacher scripted language for uniformity across the buildings. So we did collect the 2020 so that all teachers would be using that newer version, the same scope and sequence for students, so that they were getting the same lessons at the same pace. And so when we go to declare things unused and unnecessary, I do believe we have the right to contact used booksellers, which we have in the past, that they are able to purchase them, but no, they can't, the 2020 version cannot be bought from the company anymore.
Correct.
But that would be a question, I think, with business, on how we proceed.
You are allowed to resell those back to other companies that are out there, if that's your choice.
And then, the same thing with the English book.
Yes, those are novels and things. They want to clean out the bookroom and make sure that they have room for the items that we are using more frequently, and we are using digital copies of things with the one-to-one now, so there's no reason to have many copies of some of the novels and other ancillary texts.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure the public was well aware, we're not getting rid of books, we're not doing anything with books, we're just cleaning our closets and only keeping what we need because we do need the storage for other things. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Voting is open.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, can you take the voting and discussion items under Policy Committee?
Yes, I can. Revision and third and final reading for Policy 110, the instructional supplies. Approval of Policy and third reading for 906.1, the anonymous communications. Policy rescind 255 because we've actually replaced that with 251, and that's the third and final reading. We need a vote on 1 through 3, Mr. Christensen.
Okay, you make a motion and then a second?
I need to move 1 through 3 for approval.
Second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
Voting is open.
Okay, revisions to Policy 815, which is accessible use of Internet computers and network resources, and 819, suicide awareness, prevention, and response. Redlines in here were additional items, and then marking of other items that seem to be a little out of date. Mr. Cor, Dr. Korzenzky, do you have any other input on that?
I do not at this time. I apologize.
And then, the suicide awareness was also some language changes, mostly to add definitions so that more were aware of what was going on, and PSBA.
Yeah, I mean, it all looks like it's just synchronizing it with PSBA changes.
Okay, moving on to discussion items, the District PTO/PTA Council Standing Rules. There were some changes earlier this year with the PTO/PTA Council, and the presidents of the current PTOs and PTAs and executive members came and had asked for a more informal setting when we meet for council, and these were the guidelines that they came up with. So this was just an open-ended item for the board to review.
Okay, but we don't have to vote on this at any time?
No.
No, this is just?
This would become almost administrative code.
Yeah, okay.
And the one thing they did decide to do after some discussion is to start to begin to follow the boosters' rules on showing their finances. So I believe somebody in the finance office will be receiving those. I don't know if you've had that discussion or not yet. We'll get there. And those will be turned in at the end of each academic year for review, just like the boosters are turned into the athletic office.
What was the previous method?
There were no rules that we could find written down, and there were co-presidents.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Walsh sat with some of the principals and, like I said, the presidents that are currently there to come up with these rules. Dr. Korzenzky, I believe you're walking us through this one because I did bring my paper copy of this, and it is in, like, 11 by 17 format.
I'm probably walking you through that.
Okay.
You have in front of you a comparison of several school districts in the county and their current use of facilities policies. You see the descriptions on the left, and you can see how their policies are structured. You have a lot in common with many of them. There are some recommendations over to the right of how we feel it should be perhaps changed in your current policy. The biggest changes are really the classes of groups you have. You currently have seven classes of groups that use your buildings, but when you start to dig in the policy, you see that many of the classes really operate the same throughout the policy. So it would be my recommendation that you kind of condense them into four groups instead of seven. It'd be easier to manage. You have a lot of groups. Your Class 1 group, which are not charged for activities, include things like your student groups, your clubs, your organizations, your PTA, your PTO, your booster groups, your scouting groups, your sports teams, district staff, kind of make up the people that directly support your district. So traditionally, they have not been charged rental fees to use your facilities. Then you get into more of the nonprofit community groups that do public services, your church groups, your adult rec programs, and those types of programs would have probably a reduced rental rate because they are members of the community, but there's still a cost to renting those facilities out and maintaining them. Then you have your larger nonprofit, but they're not local to Bethel Park, that would have a different rate structure. And then finally, you would have your for-profit groups that come in and charge ticket sales, are probably largely represented by your dance groups that come in and other organizations that come in and want to hold events at your facilities. I think the Steelers recently had an event with us, so those are groups that we would charge a much higher rental fee to. There are some recommended changes in your insurance requirements. Most groups are charging a million-dollar policies. You're much, much lower than that now. I believe your policies are somewhat out of date. We would recommend that you provide a little more lead time for building requests. Right now, you're 30 days, and I would suggest 45 days is probably more appropriate to do the paperwork correctly and appropriately, and make sure that the facilities are available. It allows a little more lead time. I would also be recommending that you start to collect deposits on the rentals and probably collect the at least estimated rental fee in advance of the event. So that, those types of changes will probably dictate that you have a little more lead time in your process. We would like to put a little more strength in the language about using, giving us exact times, having people on-site that we can contact that are managing the events, a little more structure that will allow the district to have people on-site to manage the events as we see fit, giving us flexibility to determine whether security personnel should be at the event or not, depending on the size of the event and the nature of the event. So a lot more discretion at our part so that we can staff it appropriately and manage the event properly and make sure that it remains safe, and we have the proper staff on-site to clean up the facilities after the event is held. A little more teeth in the damages language so that we'll work with our legal counsel to kind of structure an agreement that puts teeth behind that if there are damages that occur and how those charges will be rendered. It's a little bit, for lack of a better word, loosey-goosey right now, so. We'd like to add some more strength behind the fact that we have alcohol and smoking restrictions already, but we would like to add, you know, weapons, drugs, gaming, those types of things into your, into your requirements as well. And then, obviously, there's going to be an updated list of rental charges for the different groups, really kind of looking at comparisons to what other neighboring districts are charging. In many cases, your rates are much lower than your surrounding counterparts. So I gave you some suggestions there. This is kind of a work in progress. I have the initial draft of the policy and the administrative regulations ready. We're actually going to work as an administrative team right after Thanksgiving to discuss those, and then we'll probably be back with you with at least a draft policy in December is my guess, would be the time schedule. I think anytime you make this change, this policy, I've done it in prior districts, there's a lot of lead time to communicate this. So once it goes through your three readings, when you're, where you, where you get it where you want it, there's going to be a communication process that has to go through, identifying who's used your building in the past, or where, that your rates are changing and your process is changing slightly. It can be done, but it's never done without a lot of consternation because people aren't happy when things change. So, but if you do it slowly and methodically and communicate it well, it can be successful. So that's kind of, I'll answer any questions you have.
So Mr. McCoslin has done a fantastic job of collecting this information, and one item I'd like to point out is that the market value right now of rental is even being explored by our neighboring school districts as they have reached out to myself currently asking questions. So the market value is a significant item right now, and we are... and we are quite low as compared to our neighbors. So, they're actually looking at their policies again. I think we...
I think it's always a balance because you want to be a community resource for your students, your staff, and your community members. But you can't have this open-door policy where everyone comes in and kind of uses up your resources in your building because it does take our staff's time and it takes people to be on-site to manage these events. And it does take wear and tear on your building over time. So, you need to make sure that you're covering those abilities to maintain your buildings over time and keep them in working operation and keeping them clean and usable for your students, which is the main purpose we're here, is to have students be educated and have an environment in which they can learn. So, that's the balance.
Sorry, I'd like to see the balance too with, we know that this is, with all these people coming in, we saw a lot of it in the spring. The amount of people coming in is taking a toll on our parking areas, and it is taking a toll on Black Hawk Drive. So, I think we need to look at that too as we start this process. The other thing is, I like advertisements must be clearly stated that this is not a district-sponsored activity sport who's ever coming in. That needs to be made very clear. And, you know, I have done non-district sport events at South Fayette, and they are loud and proud to tell you that this is not a South Fayette situation. And I think we need to be a little... That needs to come forth because there's a lot of people that think, oh, if it's at the high school, it's somehow Bethel thing.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I appreciate all this work. This is really great level of detail. And yeah, fully in agreement, especially once we get to the private entities that are booking these spaces. I mean, equivalent space is extremely expensive and extremely difficult to find. So, the fact that we're, you know, effectively subsidizing private entities doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense.
Exactly. We should be capturing the value, not just making a donation.
That's all I have.
Okay, good. That's the end of the business part of the meeting. Are there any public comments on anything related to school matters? We have two minutes.
Kristi Yeeman, 1131, McKnight Drive. I'd like to congratulate the members of the board who were recently elected for another four years. I think it showed that Bethel Park has faith in your leadership. Two months ago, we asked a question regarding Constitutional Day. We received an answer from Dr. Walsh, but I have more questions concerning the celebration of the Constitution in accordance with federal law. We'll follow up later. As for now, I'd like to invite Bethel Park as a community, regardless of political affiliation, race, color, or creed, to celebrate the Constitution by reading it for the district as I believe it is the most important document us as the citizens of the United States have to guarantee our varied freedoms. I also believe it is imperative that our children learn about this document and respect the inalienable rights it affirms. I understand I have two minutes. You'll be seeing me for the foreseeable future. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. Article 1, Section 1. All legislative powers herein granted shall be vested in Congress of the United States, which shall consist of the Senate, the House of Representatives. Section 2. The House of Representatives shall be composed of members chosen every second year by the people of the several states, and the electors in each state shall have the qualifications requisite for electors of the most numerous branch of the state legislature. No person shall be a representative who shall not have attained to the age of 25 years and been seven years a citizen of the United States and who shall not, when elected, be an inhabitant of that state in which he shall be chosen.
You have to wrap up for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
John Yeeman, McKnight Drive. I was going to continue with the Constitution, but I actually have some other questions that came up. Regarding the Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Task Force members, I'd like to understand how the members who are a part of that group were chosen or were selected from, I guess, were they written in? Was there something sent out where you could put your name in on a list? Because in the spirit of equity, inclusion, and belonging, it's just odd to me that, not including the board members, but the staff members and the community representatives, there's only two men out of the 14 total people that are on the task force. If we're looking for more equity, inclusion, and belonging, I think that number should be more 50-50. And again, I'd like to just understand how those people were selected. If you're looking for new members or if you're going to send out an email or something on Facebook or whatnot, I'd like to be made aware of that or have the whole district be made aware of that. As a Lebanese-American man, I would love to serve on this board if that's something that can be done. I'm putting my name in the ring, if you want to say. And I can provide all sorts of interesting information about my background and my family's background just to make sure it's inclusive enough. But again, I'd like some answers on how this list was formed. Again, why there's basically only two men and out of the 14 people and just, uh, just... I thought it was interesting that, you know, this stuff normally doesn't get voted on. And so, then who selects the people that are on the list? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any call-ins?
Is there someone that could eventually email him the answers to that?
Yeah.
I would think Dr. Walsh and Dr. Minch could certainly answer those questions.
Yeah. Dr. Minch, is that something you can put together? At least a description of how members are selected and where the opportunity comes to be on the committee?
Absolutely. I'll be happy to do it.
Would you share your contact information with Mr. Minch afterwards? Yes, okay.
I still have it on my screen.
You meant your contact information, right? Okay, then, any board comments?
I think we owe the congratulations to the tennis team that's here tonight.
Yeah.
To the new principal at NAMs. There's a new softball coach named tonight, too. So, congratulations and welcome to all.
Yeah, great tennis team. Inspires me to learn tennis, but I'll probably have to resign myself to pickleball or something.
I'd like to recognize all of the beards in the room for the shaved lumber around the table that I've noticed, even our superintendent, who I've never seen have facial hair. The other day, I saw. So, just, yeah, keep them, keep them growing.
And Ms. Hoppe, if I can, that people ask what No Shave November is actually for. It is a recognition for the male population with generalized cancer survivors, things of that nature. So, there are a lot of legends about No Shave November, but it is, and Dr. Walsh definitely inspired. I'm sorry, I shaved to be here tonight. My colleagues over there are about ready to shave as it's itchy and to a point where they're not at a point. But just to make sure that everybody understands that this is in support of, you know, cancer awareness in general, but for the male population.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Dr. Corzinski.
I wanted to say that I was very pleased to be welcomed over to George Washington this morning for the Michaela's Voice Assembly that they had, which is a wonderful program that talks about inclusion and belonging and that everyone has an opportunity to make a friend. It is a wonderful program that will go through the year. They'll come back and do another assembly. There's an art project that they do involving individual paintings. Depending on which project you pick, they'll use a wheelchair to roll over the painting with paint. Various things that they do. But it was a wonderful, wonderful event this morning. And we had a guest speaker who goes to Can and Matt, came and spoke to the students. And it's a wonderful way of demonstrating to students that every person is just like them and all people have value and worth and that, bless you, bless you, and that everyone can get along and be friends. And the kids were so engaged. They were also really super polite. So, good job, George Washington. It was a wonderful program. So, hopefully, you guys can come check it out in the spring when they come back and do the second assembly. That'd be really great. They'll have like an art installation they will unveil.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.